Okay, this meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Penn Township, Wednesday, November 18th, 2015, will now come to order. We will stand for Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please proceed. Okay, there's been no executive session, but I will be calling for a brewery brief on at the end of this meeting pertaining to personnel. Helen, I ask you to step. At this time, recognition of visitors?
You got one on the agenda first.
Okay, Lynn Heckley?
Yes, right here, present. Question?
Sure, if you wish. You don't have to, but please do.
We are Local Daisy Troop 106, line five. We just had our first meeting last night and we're requesting because we're a nonprofits organization to possibly have the weekly $25 fee waived for Daisy Troop. This is a new trip to the Duncan area and we just really greatly appreciate it.
And you wish to use room for it over here?
Correct.
And I looked and read about your request the other day and I'll make a motion that we concur with the waiving of $25 fee.
Well, I agree. Kim and I would greatly appreciate it, thank you, we're appreciative. I was gonna have to put them to work, so.
Okay. Motion made with a second, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Aye, you second.
I did.
Oh. Aye, that's so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll see.
Okay, Joe's on the list, Cece?
Yes, two things. I'm wondering if for opening a gun shop, would that be included as an approved use under Section 803?
I don't have the ordinance in front of me. Lenny, approve gun shop as in selling or making or?
Selling.
Under 803? Which are permitted uses. Are you talking about the co-op?
I'm talking about any, if one were to open for sales.
Lenny said yes.
Yeah, the zoning officer said yes, Cece.
Okay, because there's nothing specifically mentioning that in 803. And I didn't know if that was a permitted use or if that would require a variance.
Sales is permitted. If they're manufacturing, I think it's conditional.
I was gonna say, if they're manufacturing, it's a different situation. Sales is permitted.
Remember Mr. Myers in the Perdix area got a conditional use for doing that?
Just want a clarification on that. Thank you. Yeah, would repairs, how would that fall?
I'd send you to Lenny.
That would be Gunsmith.
Yeah, I guess so. Then it would be conditional use for repairs. I, truthfully, I'd send the person asking to open that type of shop up to Lenny, to talk to him.
And of course, my other question. In light of last month's decision by Perry County Planning Commission and DEP to, in their words, consider the application to be withdrawn due to lack of response. When does the pile of rubble across from my house go away? According to Section 1314, nothing is permitted to be stored over 20 feet high in a commercial district that is way over 20 feet high. It's been there way too long. We've been not doing anything because of DEP. Now, if DEP says, "We've not heard from you, we consider your application withdrawn," when do we stand up for ourselves?
Well, it's still in effect. The violation letter. Have Lenny go ahead and start processing or what?
Well, we give him a cease and.
He already has a cease and desist for you working there at all. But he has a violation letter for the pile of rocks.
Correct, and he was never able to reduce the pile.
Because DEP wouldn't let him.
Wouldn't let him.
Correct.
Correct, so now that's on our way, so we need to let, we need to get him to get that pile because, like Cece said, it's been there way too long and it's way too high and it's in violation. So I recommend that we send him a letter telling him that he has certain, well, I guess Lenny's gonna have to.
Lenny.
Because really, I've just seen worse piles than that taken care of at a Penn dot site, a state site, and they had the rubble gone that was five times bigger than that, gone within two weeks. So I believe in a few days with his equipment that he says he has, that pile can be reduced and gone.
Okay, just a question that just occurred to me. Would that violate our cease and desist? With him going out and moving it, because we told him he couldn't. I'd have to look at the cease and desist. I think it's only for selling and selling things off his property.
Yeah, his cease and desist wasn't for all activities of any kind, Helen?
It was complete, everything.
Everything, so. But the violation letter also says he has to remove it.
I guess.
I don't.
I guess what we have to do is talk to Lenny and talk to Rich to see where we could give him temporary, just enough to get rid of that pile.
Okay.
And that's all the work he's allowed to do is to reduce and remove that pile.
With Rich and Lenny. I'm gonna tell Lenny to do, proceed with the violation. If we can get that from Rich. Okay. Motion?
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Make a motion that we go ahead and contact Rich on the legalities of the cease and desist and then have Lenny proceed with the violation from thereafter. And if the board can be notified and Rich gives us that information that we can.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Aye, that's so.
I'm assuming you second? Assuming you second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Linda Gausse? Bob Gausse? Jason Harrison? Mr. Fickle? Bob Johnson?
Nothing, thank you.
Stanley? Steve Radney?
No.
Chris Anderson? Oh, you're on the.
He's covered under.
Yeah, so is Randy, so is the Smiths, unless you guys got anything else? Mr. Benner, anything else? Anyone else on there? Who? Okay, that's it, Henry.
Okay, thank you. New voices expenditure before you. Any special comments, okay?
Just that we made the first payment on the new Ford.
Well, we wrote the check, we haven't made the payment yet.
Wow. I think I gave you the email, they don't know exactly what date they're delivering it yet. And we also paid for the annual life and disability insurance.
Make a motion that we pay the new voices expenditures as presented to the board.
Just one question.
Sure.
The payment of the truck, they came out of which fund?
Liquid fuels.
Liquid fuels.
Do you have that on here? Yeah, the 16, 912, that's what that is.
I second.
Same motion made with a second, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye.
Aye. Except that I understand from Brian on's, check number 28801 to register, because I'm employed by the firm.
Treasuries report before you. Objection or approval, checks.
We received a monthly payment from CAP tax for earned income tax and quarterly payment for the local services tax.
I hear most approved treasures report subject audit.
I make that motion.
Motion made, I hear a second.
I second.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Aye, have it. I may underneath treasures report CD.
Okay, there is a, the CD number one on the sheet you have is a park and rec CD that is maturing on December 22nd. The amount is $5,568.95 plus the 11 months of interest. Park and Rec has chosen to invest that at the Landisberg Bank effective last week. They have a new CD special which we can use government money to purchase that for 1.5% for 35 months. And that's how they chose to invest that money. Also, the CD which you voted on last month matures today. And they had previously, and you had voted, to invest that at, ooh, let me think.
Mifflentown.
Mifflentown, at 1.25%. But they now would like to also invest that one at Landisberg because it's 1.5%.
That would leave them with two more CDs that are six months.
Six months. Okay, what is the wish of the board on granting the request of the parking record on changing their CDs to Landisberg for one and a half percent for the amount of $5,568.95 for one and the other one for what, $11,048.60? Do I hear a motion?
I make that motion.
Okay, motion made, I'll second. All those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Minutes, October 28th, 2015, for approval and rejection.
I just have one change here. It would be on page four, under the treasures report, second paragraph, last line where it says, Peter stated that this is not accurate, report may, may contact the district attorney. I believe my statement was, I contact my attorney.
You said both. You said both attorney.
I said both, okay. I'd like to reflect that to state district attorney and/or my attorney.
What is the wish of the board, approval, subject to that change? I'll make a motion that the minutes be approved.
With the change.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Highway report at this time. Finally got around removing the dead tree on Faculty Road out there. Brian finally got that. And that was one that I wanted to remove at the time we paved the road. Residents didn't want it. Four months later, they cut the top out, but once removed. Finally got it down. Dropped it between two buildings, left it lay, they wanted the wood. Really didn't like that type of a job because of the liability, but we got it down for them anyhow. Continued on the shoulders on Litton Hill. We made some repairs on Sawmill and Wersh out north of where I live, went up to Mr. Gerner's place up in the mountain. We fixed that up there. I repaired the auger on the road shoulder, paver out there, and when a stone got in it, done some damage to the auger. Worked about three days out here till we got it apart, got it welded back up and got it back, got it back in service. Replaced the air chambers on the Ford 8000, ready for inspection, which goes up tomorrow morning for inspection. That and one of the other trucks. We've got, that truck is ready to go. We changed oil on all of our small engines. That's on our plate tamper, our tar buggy, our generators, the pressure washer, all the small engines that take regular motor oil at this time of year. We get them prepared and they are prepared and oil changed in for the ensuing summer months. We took the lawnmowers out of the wreck board up here like we did, purchased oil filters for the shower. Took them out in the garage, changed the oil filters, greased the Kubota, put it back up. The batteries are put out in the shed in the winter where they periodically have a charger put on them. If you don't charge them through the winter without any charges, next spring you got dead batteries. You're buying batteries all over the place. We do that with all of our batteries during the winter, on the paver, the tractors, the rollers are set. If you don't periodically, like twice a month, put a two amp charger on there for a day or two. Come the spring, they're sulfated, you buy a new battery. So we take care of that, that's part of the maintenance program out there. So the batteries will be taken out tomorrow. We're gonna fix that broken hood that's on the lawnmower for you, for any day, and get the trucks back. We replaced expansive tank and the piping in the garage out there, and we have that thing here, the wood chipper. We've been using that quite a bit on a continuous flow of branches in and out there. And like I said, after two trucks inspection tomorrow, we have one more and everything's up to date out there in the shed. I would hope to be able to get the Schoolhouse Road entrance done down there. We've had some of the other things that we've been working on. The rebar for the Schoolhouse Road entrance down here to be fixed is there. And as I explained, I think at our budget meeting, the concrete and that center is willing to be nodated and the bollards down there, put on that entrance to make that right by Marstella. And that part of it there is, I hope we find three or four days. I haven't made that PA1 call just because of that, so that we can meet the timeframe of it. So we're hoping with hunting season, guys taking times off, that we're able to get to that. If not, it's gonna be one of those projects that carry over till the next year where the new crew coming in are gonna have that to do. Flagpole tomorrow, fire company's coming up to put the ropes up, put the new flagpole on Karen. And they're also going out to Hoffman Road and Butcher Shop to flush out that culvert that went down through Rob's Field and got covered over the end of it. It was very shut, awful lot of debris in it, and they're gonna flush that out for us tomorrow. Friday, excuse me, Friday, tomorrow's rain day, I'm sorry. Ford 8000, for all those interests, it should be the next truck to be replaced. Taking a look at replacing and keeping new equipment out there. It's the oldest one, 95, starting to show some wear on it, a lot of rust on it. The newer trucks are holding up a lot better. And that's because of the pressure washer and the de-saltin' them immediately after there's a snowstorm. They are now washed and cleaned immediately. Nothing else gets done until that's done. And it makes a big difference on the brake lines and everything else. But that should be the next truck that this board should take a look at replacing out there. We're a pretty good ship. We fixed the bent bulkhead on the Sterling finally. Had a rainy day the other day, we got it back down, put it back in place where it belongs. And I have one more thing, I had mentioned at our, what you call it out here, the oil tank out here for the E3 oil. The incoming board supervisors is welcome to use that tank out there. I put that tank and fixed that up, put it out there for them because you can purchase 1,000 gallon E3 oil for in the tar buggy and that out there. It's economical at a better price and it also saves you running once 200 gallon out of it. You can come back here and you deliver it to the tank out there. This board is welcome to use that. But I would like them to let me know, or please, give me a signed piece of paper, if you're not gonna use it, that it comes back to me. It is worth some monetary value, but this board's welcome to use that if they want to continue to use that tank. It meets requirements of a temporary tank, there's nothing voiding anything, any DEP permits out there. I was DEP inspector, I gotta leave for tanks, installation of them, et cetera. It meets all those requirements, there's nothing illegal with it out there. Although, if they don't wish to use it, I wish somebody would be kind enough to let me out there. I'll let it out there till I hear from someone, yea or nay.
That tank is the one that has to be moved.
What's that?
It has to be moved for.
It has to be portable.
Portable.
It has to be portable, yes, Brian, and it is portable.
But does it have to be moved for a period of time before it's considered portable? Or can it permanently stay there along with its portable?
Yeah, it's portable. It has to be, it doesn't have to be up and down, you know what I'm saying? It has to be, it can't be on a fixed base or it can't be.
So we don't, we never have to move it?
No.
For it to be, stay certified as portable?
I have, just, just so that there was no requirement, but I haven't the last two years, I'll be honest with you. Okay? And if that's the case, it needs to be moved? I'd gladly move it for you, it won't cost you things if you want to use it. If you're, if you're worried about that part of it, I'd gladly move it. It's a simple job to move it. It was made to be portable, that it could be taken up, put up and down, okay? That is the one thing that I have on, on the highway report. We're gonna continue on trying to get as much done as possible. And I will give at the end of this thing here, I said I would give a report as to what I have to offer for here at the end of the year. And I'll be doing that under a continuation of old business, which I would like to rebate part of the minutes. I'll give that report later on. That's all I have for the present time in the highway report.
Ryan, quick question here, since we brought this up, I don't think it's an overly bearing task for us to do now. I would like to keep the tank here for the township use. Again, it would be profitable for us to use it and continue to use it.
You're more than welcome.
So I guess.
If just someone would give me something that says that if you're not gonna use it.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
That's fine.
You know, if it's something that you think we should, should, I recommend tonight that we make the motion, have Helen draft the letter, that way it's in the file saying that.
Yes.
You know, we will continue use of that piece of equipment. The day that we no longer use it or need it, it will be given back to Mr. Hall.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give a consent of saying aye. I am staying because of the tank being mine and don't wanna show any beneficial part to myself in regards to it. I'm glad you guys use it, it's a big savings that we buy our oil that way, we can bid it in bold. That's all I have underneath the highway report at the present time. Penn Township Planning Commission, of course, Randy Malad, an all final subdivision plan?
Yes, you have the plan.
Yes.
A DEP module, mailer, and a time extension if needed.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Joe.
I wasn't at the last meeting, supervisory meeting, but I believe you guys are aware what's going on. I was discussing at the last meeting, I believe. I don't know how much detail, you want me to review it again, but the plan was presented to planning commission this week. Maybe gave us a conditional approval.
Recommendation.
Conditional recommendation for approval for the plan with six conditions. Do you have a copy of this letter?
Mm-hmm.
The, there's an easement, the road maintenance declaration has been prepared. It's been reviewed by all of the homeowners and they're still tweaking it. There's a couple little things that we have to do to that yet. But within the next week or so, we will be taking care of that. And then every one of them will sign this agreement and deliver this to the township before you sign the plan if you choose to approve the plan this evening. Do you want me to review?
May save you some time, Joe.
Okay.
But the recommendation of, Max talked to me tonight, Max gonna be here this evening. Said he wasn't ready, didn't have much on the agenda. And see, we would like to grant you the extension of time till you get all these things done and bring it back, that everything is, chance for everybody to review it so that we don't prove it on subject to conditions and then those conditions not get done. That was part of the problem in the past plan. So I make a motion that we grant you that extension of time. And that gives you time to have everything notarized, everything back in place and everything out there. You bring it back next month, and I see no reason why it shouldn't be approved.
When's your meeting next month?
The 30th?
The 30th, yeah.
That's why you gave us the time extension to January 1st?
It's December 30th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that gives everybody a chance for review it, this lawyer, this solicitor and everybody. And, and, and I don't think that should, that's not gonna hurt nobody.
I think that's okay. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, then that way everybody can get everything done that's still left like there to be done, Joe.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Okay?
No problem at all.
You're not gonna be putting no sand out or breaking ground this winter yet anyhow, are you? No, okay. Okay.
Not a problem.
I'll make, I'll put that in form of motion that we grant them the time extension for.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so.
Table plan, table plan.
Pardon?
Table the plan.
Table the plan, yeah. The motion, table the plan, that's right. Okay, anything else in regard to that?
Uh, the mailer can be tabled with the plan.
Go, go with the plan, okay.
You're gonna get me that DEP stuff then, something somebody?
Well, the, the mailer, you wanna do the mailer now?
Yeah, you need to, I need to get that processed.
Okay. Up to you.
The DEP mailer, you know, can either be held or can be.
If it's, if we, if we approve the mailer tonight, then I should be able to get the approval back before the next meeting.
And I'll take care of one of the condition sees.
Yeah, that's one of the conditions.
I'll make a motion then, we send the DEP mailer.
I second.
Yes.
Made with a second, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Aye. Ayes have it, so. I doubt if you have it back to 30 days.
It's an, it's actually an exemption, so you actually, they have 10 days to actually approve that. It's been taken from about 30, 30, 25 to 30 days, so it'll be close.
It'll be close, yeah.
Yeah, but at least it gives us that option to bid. Possibly.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I need the second for the tabling of the plan.
Okay, and we need a second.
A second.
Okay, a second on the tabling, plan, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so.
Yes. And have the audience walk out.
Zoning report, Helen.
Okay, you have.
Zoning hearing board, Dr.
Uh, yeah, Norm's Tire and Auto, which is, if you know the weather, that's located on 1150. Norm's Tires Autos, on the north side is a bunch of warehouse days, storage areas. And then they have the other windows of the world, whatever, they're naming for it, the other property. Mr. Curran owns the building with the windows and the storage area. Norm wants to buy the storage area. This will still, all right now, all three lots are non-conforming on lot area. So he needs a zoning variance because one of them will still be a non-conforming. So he's trying to get rid of this before he brings in the subdivision plan. And planning commission actually recommended that you don't be a party because they don't see anything wrong with what he wants to do.
And that's one, Helen, that I also wouldn't know why the township wouldn't be a party to a very simple situation. Therefore, I'll make a motion that the township not be party to that here. Unless someone wants to be the party, you're more than welcome.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so.
That's all we have under zoning.
Okay, storage enforcement officer report.
Uh, you have the normal report there. And then we have Lee Wright's cleaning contract for his holding tank renewal. Everything's signed.
Okay. More than Warren Holding Tank, that also?
Yes, we got Bill's also, and he got his signed and everything.
You have a motion to approve?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve. New Blum's Holding Tank renewal and Wood and Warren Holding Tank renewal.
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give a consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so. Okay, is that Norm's Tire and Auto?
Oh, yeah, we just went out of order, don't matter.
Okay.
Don't matter.
Nothing else under that?
Nope, and that's it.
Penn Township Parking Record Report? Penn Township parking wreck report?
Um, you have my report, and they all can have his workers be done, has begun on the redoing the kitchen. It's not done yet, no.
Helen and Karen, with the, the donation for those cabinets, would that be made, made out to the parking wreck?
I'm thinking.
Yeah, with a suit.
Yeah, I think so.
Karen, we did drain the rec center out there, I guess you're aware of?
Yes.
Drain the water heater, put antifreeze and everything out there, so that oughta be good for, for the wreck. Okay? Penn Township Municipal Authority.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Our representative?
Can I ask a question? I believe you're losing Sam from, from your PA one calls.
Yes.
Now, is that, is that municipal authority responsibility to replace him, or is that?
Half of it, half of him.
Half of him?
Yes, he, Sam was, kindly did our portion also. But the authority is responsible for going out and checking their own lines when a PA one call comes in.
Okay, so we need a new PA one person?
No.
No?
That's all taken care of.
Oh, great.
That's already taken care of with a new operator.
Yep.
I didn't mind when Henry was talking about PA one calls that were down here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Secretary's report, holding tank ordinance, Helen?
Yes, that's up for you guys to, I know you just got it tonight. But I did the changes Brian gave me. And if you are, trust him enough-
And you, enough?
Yes. We can advertise again.
Okay, it's been readily reviewed and resubmitted. What is the wish of the board as far as giving Helen the okay to advertise the holding tank ordinance?
I make the motion that we go ahead and approve the ordinance and for it to be-
Advertised.
Advertised.
Advertised. Motion made that we advertise the ordinance for adoption later, okay? Motion made, I'll second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Next thing I have is a room rental. This is a one-time thing. Mrs. Wiegle is looking to use the large room for a benefit fundraiser for the Wright family. Mr. Wright is a two-times veteran of Iraq. He came home, was only home for a little time, the family house caught fire and burnt. And he sustained burns and he's still in Hershey Medical. So she would like to do a fundraiser using our room for that. And she's also asking if we would waive the fee.
Under circumstances, Helen, reading that report, I make a motion that in this case we waive the fee.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
Okay.
Flood system, Helen?
Started installing today. The police office, I believe, is, everything's installed, I don't know if it's up and running yet.
Everything inside's done, yeah.
Okay. They're gonna finish up, over being this rain day, they're gonna run lines and stuff tomorrow inside. And then they're gonna finish up Friday and Monday, putting the stuff on the outside. As she said, the kitchen remodel started, it should all be done by Friday. Request for proposals, you have the draft there, and if you have anybody else's names, give them to me.
I have some corrections for the, uh-
That's fine, I'll do those too, that's a draft. Also, you want these back when? I need to know that date.
September, twenty-first?
I think, no, I think it was the eighteenth, is it not?
Twenty-first, I give you a week to review, to take a look at them before the thirtieth meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
And we should place an advertisement in the record for this. Now, if you guys don't have your names and everything to me, I can hold off for a couple days to send this out.
Okay.
I looked at your list there, we've got quite a list, we just need to start before I notice it.
Yeah, I'll get everything ready to go, once I get the changes.
I'll be tonight if you have time for the meeting.
Oh, yeah. For your benefit, Brian, on the list of them, I put a ZHB and a UCC.
Yes.
Those two law firms cannot be ours, ours, because there are zoning hearing board and our UCC Board of Appeals Attorneys. So they can't be our township attorney. Turner and O'Connell and Dennis Chateau.
So, Chateau?
And Turner and O'Connell. Jim Turner's the solicitor.
And those three cannot?
And yes, I will not be sending an RFP to them directly.
Okay.
Why waste their time in ours? Advertisement with you, Henry, who's second?
I second that we post the advertisement for-
Request for, for proposals.
Proposal for township solicitors, whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
You first or he second?
Pardon?
You first, he second?
Yes.
You motioned, he second.
I thought you were making a motion over top of that.
Oh, no, no. I was just clarifying.
Oh, okay, 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 I made a motion, okay, you're second, thank you, Brian, okay. Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Aye. Okay.
And the last thing I have is, we have two appointment letters already. One for the planning commission and one for the municipal authority. The planning commission is recommending Ed Chisholm for another four-year term. And the authority's recommending Mr. Koker for a five-year term.
Okay. I make a motion in regards to planning commission that we concur with the request for the appointment of Ed Chisholm for another four-year term.
Mm-hmm.
I second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. I also make a motion that we concur with a five-year term for Jim Chisholm's replacement back on the municipal authority. Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it, so order.
It's two less things you have to do in January. And that's all I have.
Okay. Station report?
We did hire the three officers this month, and they're in training right now. We have one, we're waiting for MOPAC certification, the other two are, we've applied for their cards, we just haven't received them yet. We did update one of the, one of the vehicles with printer and scanner, so we'll be up and running, doing tests with Penn Dot. We had to schedule a point with Penn, Penn Dot to actually send, send stuff back and forth yet. And that should be done. We have all the equipment for the other two vehicles. And when they, the trade-in vehicle is down at the upfitters now being disassembled. So they could be reassembled in the new vehicle when it, when they do get that. Hopefully that'll be done within the next two to three weeks. Hoping anyway. We're still in the grant, still in the grant, aggressive driving grant, it's still going around. And that's all for now.
Henry, question?
On the computer system, putting in the car, portable office, as you call it. Is that part of, if I remember correctly, seventy thousand dollar system you bought last year? Am I off base on that?
That's, that's the inside part, you know, then this is, this is the outside part and, and the vehicle itself, yeah.
Yep.
And what we're doing is we're upgrading, we added scanners, we added printers, well, yes, a printer and a scanner in each vehicle, and-
That's per whole seventy thousand dollar package, or the two separate?
No, that, no, that was the, the mainframe, I mean, the, the original price was the mainframe, yeah.
And what's the cost of the?
This, I believe we still had money from that, that we didn't use at all for the, for the interior and that, that, they are being paid out of that, that money too.
Out of the seventy, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Did we get paid for the Godberbroon three?
No, no, I just called it the best one, until, until the budget goes through, well. Till the state pays, then they are compared.
Anything else, Helen?
Uh, not under police.
Okay. Okay, we move down to-
Permit.
Okay, permit report, fair.
You have it with you.
Okay, correspondence, Helen?
None.
None, then so it comes up beneath the portion of old business, okay? It's at this point that I said that I would be giving a report as to what I had to offer in regards to me leaving the position of township supervisor out here. It's a great concern of mine, that everybody knows what's out here in the shed around the portion where I worked at the most. And that there is a decent turnover, and it's meant to go as smooth as I can possibly make it over here for all equipment that's out here. There is some other things that I will leave here for the next month, and it'll be some directions out there that follow up on some things that sometimes you get forgetting, like charging the batteries. Pressure washer where you put it away, has to have antifreeze put in it for the summertime to keep the little valves from sticking inside. Has to be lubrication, or otherwise the water dries out, they stick tight, will not work. And to take them apart is a tedious job to get them back in business. Small things like that, that I'll leave some more reports for whoever wishes to them. I want everybody to know that all the trucks will be inspected and ready to plow snow. All snow plows have good blades and start the winter season with it, there's extra blades out there. I advise to whoever's looking after it, the blades should be looked at and not wore into the bolt or under the frogs of those snow plows out there. Like I saw them pass where they wore them down, there was nothing there to bolt to. They wore the plows down till they right up the bolt holes. Had to buy new frogs, cut them off, weld them on, put them on there, rather than buy a new plow. So this occurs at least two times a year, depending on the snow and the ice that we have out here, as to how much you drop those plows on the road. All the electric tools that I know of out there are in working order. All the wrenches, the air tools, and are in the garage or in the shop, and all the ratchets, three-quarter inch, half and quarter inch ratchet socket sets are in good shape and in order out there in their boxes. We have three chainsaws, they're all in good working order with good chains on them. They're all, all in good, where the pole saw is good working order, has a new chain on it, an extra chain out there for. All of our trimmers are in good working order, have good heads on them, and all work properly and feed and wire. The floor of the road saw is in good working condition out there, and there is a good diamond blade there for that. That has been lent out in the past, and when we lend that out, as a rule in the past, we don't send our good diamond blade, because they are extremely expensive. The party that borrowed them used their own blades and put them on and took them on and off. So it's whatever they decide, but those diamond blades for cutting, salt cutting across the roads are extremely expensive. They need water on them, they need to be taken care of. The plate tamper is in good working order. Our foot stomper out there is, is also working well, and everything is in it repaired, everything in it to full oil. Tar buggy, the engine stuff in it is all in good working order. The pump and everything works on it. The tank for the, put the fuel oil in so that it don't congeal in the line and clog it up, you can't use it, is all functioning and all in good order. The portable generator that we have out there doesn't get used much, but I will say that that gets borrowed by our municipal authority on occasions to go out here and do some things. And when you are working out along the road and you're doing concrete forms and et cetera and whatnot, the generator is really handy, because it runs your power saws, your hiltiguns to put anchors and stuff in. And it's not used much, but it is in good working order, and it is a new piece of equipment, I think, two, maybe three years old. Pressure washer is in good working order, that's the one with the Honda engine on it, the one that we work the trucks off with. In the summertime, like I said, in the summertime you don't use it, need a little maintenance with the, with the battery charger on it. They sulfate and go dead, you're buying new batteries all the time if you don't do that. Emergency generator that sits out there was donated to us by the, by the municipal authority that sits out there, is a gas-driven one. It's in there plugged in to the gas at all the time. Before they tried using that, they left it set, the gas congealed, clogged up, turned into slack, and when they needed emergency generator, it wouldn't work. We took the tank off of that out there for intensive purposes. This is just information for you guys, so you know how, what has to be done out there, if someone has to ride hurt on somebody to see it's done. You, we put a smaller tank on it, and we fill it full of fresh gas. And as we need a five-gallon can of gas for in our small machines for on the road paper and all the other ones that take it, we tap out of that tank. And when we take ten gallon of gas out of that, we purchase ten more and put back in the generator. Continuous flow of fresh gas in the generator. And we haven't had one time that we go out there now that doesn't start right up. And, and we've used that up at the pumping station for the water, and it also connects in downstairs here for, for this building here. We need, there, there's a procedure to keep fresh gas in, in place, the road crew out there is well aware of that. There was a close account of all fuel used out of those tanks out there in a log, and checked against the master meters on the pumps. And those numbers better come out with a gallon or two to suit me every month. That wasn't always the case, but that's the way it is right now. When it's taken out its meter, taken off the master meter, and it's put in a log, is where it goes. If it goes, the fuel I donate out of my budget goes to rec board, that's all accounted for. Every time it goes into Kubota, whatever truck it goes in. We have the gas out there, the, on the one gas truck, the two gas trucks that we got, that is, that is closely logged and separated out there. They are all separated by accounts number for the small engines and for everything. Those separations are all in there, so that there is a good accountability of all fuel and where it goes. Barrels of oil, because when you change truckload on the big trucks, it's five gallon a pop. So we bought oil by the barrel. The cheapest place I've found has been off the barracks over here at Newville. And I don't make a special trip if someone's over that way, or someone, where we pick it up. You can buy barrel oil for about a two hundred dollar savings, what you buy if you go buy for, buy by the crate or by the twelve pack or the twenty-four pack, is what the difference is on. So on barrel number one, which is your fifteen, forty-dece oil, there's approximately forty-five gallon in that barrel at the present time. The SAE thirty that they use for in changing the ga, the oil for in the generators out there and the small motors, motors out there, that's been here quite a while. It's been used, served, there's like twenty-five gallon in that. And that used to go in the old Chevy car and the police car down there, but they don't use it for in that anymore. The AW thirty-two is hydraulic oil. Since we got rid of the grater, we don't use so much of that. There is approximately eighteen gallon hydraulic oil out there. We don't have anything that leaks at the present time, unless you blow a hose, but that's in barrel number three out there. That's what you have in quantities out there. There is, I think, sixteen quarts of loose oil out there in quarts that was there from the old police cars and et cetera. You guys take care of that, that was stuff that was bought. The guys also use that out there in the small engines, or when they need a quart of oil out there, that's out there in the crate. And like I said, all small engines have been ready for summer work next year. The large equipment, John Deere backhoe, I know of nothing wrong with it. The large equipment, the John Deere backhoe, I know of nothing wrong with it at the present time, is in good working order, we did put a radiator in it this summer, and a tie rod in on the one front of it. Uh, engine's in good shape, everything else, a lot of service in that machine out there. The Ford tractor with the mower and broom is in good working order, doesn't have very many hours on it, good tractor, good loader, good forks for on it, setting out there in the shed, that one likewise, if you don't put charger on it or periodically through the winter, that battery come spring won't work. The Uber is in good working order setting outside. The rib tin for the roof and the screws for the roof are out in the shed, still bundled together, the two before pearl and replacements that are needed up overhead in the roof in the garage are still there on the floor. That is one that I thought we would get to do over last winter, looking for winter work, and we had a snow and ice about every three, four days, and then heavy rain come spring, and we did not get that roof on. So that is one of those projects that I don't have completed out there, and I don't see getting completed by the end of the month. The anti-skid bin is full, the salt shed is full of salt out there. Job's not completed, outdoor drive will not be completed, the culvert, I'm not going to get to it, culvert replacement is needed, Max had been out to take a look at that, we identified with the people over there, there was two fifteens to be put in there to go across down through their easement, this project, uh, it just won, it just won more that I didn't get done this year. Uh, that one there, I would request that when the township goes to place that, they please contact me, because in the process of doing that, they are going to have to remove survey pins and permanent markers. I want them back where they belong, I just paid big money to have that surveyed and done. They gotta be back in the right place, I'll work with you, any way to do that, to do that, as long as there's no disagreement as to where they go, that can be measured out, marked, pinpointed, and measured and put back in, I'm glad to work with whoever does it. Schoolhouse may not be completed, depending on weather, that's my next priority as soon as we're done with the shoulders out here, which we hope to work on. I would like to get the entrance of schoolhouse done, I have the rebar out there in the shed, and I have the commitment from Marcela down there, and if I can find some insulation blankets or whatnot down there in a couple days in above freezing weather, we will definitely try to do that, that I want to do. The culvert replacement of Watts Drive, they all need to be done, they're not going to get completed this year, I'm not going to get to it. The budget is prepared for road replacement, I, I got the budget numbers on it, got the figures for it, they're included in the budget for faculty and barric out here, uh, that project out there shouldn't be a big project to, to get off ground to get done next year if the board decides that they still want to continue with it, but it needs implemented by the new board in two thousand and sixteen for those roads to be done. I done the legwork on it, if there's any need by golly or help with preparing that road bid, I would be glad to donate and, and help with the road bid, that it gets sent out for the contractors to come in for the pre-bid. Normally that's been done by the engineers in the past, and believe me, it's expensive when they do it. That costs you five, six thousand dollars to have your engineer to do that, to prepare a road bid, takes about four hours. But they do the work in, in regards to that and make an awful lot of prints and whatnot. So, I would like to make note, so that it's made note, that the capital reserve account is in good shape, our liquid fuels is in excellent shape and should provide money by golly if it's managed properly, the way I see it managed, how everybody else manages it is, is another story. Should provide excellent road replacement in the years to come if that procedure is followed. The general fund CDs are still intact, are in good shape. I would like to mention some of the things that, that may not be known to Mr. Peters or the incoming supervisor of Brian, but the productivity of the road crew out here is excellent. And some of the things that you worked out with the road crew out here was how do you handle dinnertime? I worked underneath supervisors before and road masters here as a part-timer, and when I, when dinnertime come, I stayed on the job, an hour and a half late to crew come back every day. They jump in a township truck to go somewhere. I worked construction for thirty-eight years, I was given a half hour for lunch, and don't leave early and be late or you didn't have a job. The road crew out here agrees to that, for all intensive purposes, the road crew in the morning, and however you change it later on, they agreed they would much rather work through dinnertime and be off at three o'clock. They have a bite to eat out here in the morning, which your wife makes for them every morning, I don't expect everybody else to do that, to bring their own. But when the tar buggy's hot, and they're in the continuity working out here, they don't want to quit, they sooner work straight through, and it has really worked out well. So that is what's been done out here, they take a pot of coffee along, they gave them a thermos carafe, they take it along, they get their coffee breaks, whatever they want, but it works out well for them, and it does not break up the continuity, and we're not taking a township truck running over there, there's nobody that could work on Watts Drive out in Linton Hill or out in Rup Road, can take a township truck and go anywhere, have lunch, be back in a half hour. Just can't be done, and it's a terrible expense when you add it all up over a period of time in a year. So that was one of the things that has taken place out here, Steve and Tom, good, two good hard workers, they, 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 you lay the work out for them, and I assure you that, that they do their best by golly to, to meet what you want, and they're here early, and they, they, they stick it out till the end of the day. I would like it to be known that when I took office in two thousand and four, our municipal authority was in pretty bad shape, today it was very functional and sound financially. Uh, and it was a, a long struggle seeing that, that that situation didn't get worse but got better, and Lee, I thank you for the efforts that you and I put into that together. You had a lot to do by golly to turn that around at one time, you know what I'm talking about? Yeah, yeah, I know, uh, uh, I've always, you, you know where we were at, and we're in good shape today, and I'm, I'm glad of that. The liquid assets for the township are sound. In the past, everywhere I could find a way to cut cost if practical, they were implemented, such as heating costs, equipment to make the job easier, the guys, I never short them out here on good equipment. Engineering costs have been trimmed tremendous in this Penn Township, engineering costs were astronomical when I came here in two thousand and four, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a month. Tonight we hardly have anything here, we've taken that away from them, we were designing every culvert, we were designing everything that we're doing out here just to replace a culvert. And so those engineering costs that have been stymied and taken away or, or, or taking a look out there have been a big thing in, uh, cost reduction that, that increases the revenues for the township without increasing taxes, the cost reduction. Wherever we could find it, we done it, with the heating, engineering, wherever we could find it, we implemented it, we took the free anti-skid that we could got, we've taken the cheapest anti-skid that we've got, we've bid things tighter than we've ever had, and every one of those, you take a look, if it's ten dollars here, a hundred dollars there, or a couple hundred here, it adds up the money that puts, that put the township where we're at, that we were able to be where we are today without having any taxes. One thing I feel the township has missed out on, and I mentioned this once before, fire tax, we have missed out by never getting it implemented, very unpopular thing to some, popular by others. But a fire tax is the one thing that all the argument over the years over accountability takes the accountability thing into play and makes that money accountable to this board of supervisors, so that there can be no argument about the accountability of that money. It also would allow our fire companies, sound planning for their needs. And I tried, and I mentioned this year, this could have been implemented without a tax increase this year, and it would have started a road recovery on something like this. Last fire meeting that I was at with Duncan down here with the borough and whatnot, I am so sorry that that's never gotten implemented, I see East Pensbury just went to it. Other townships, you're gonna have to, folks, if you're gonna provide that money, it has to be with accountability, and you will find accountability comes back here to this board for that money, and you have a lot more say in what the taxpayers' money goes for. I do not, I can live with it either way, but that could have been implemented this year. I hope the board continues with two things. Depreciation banquet that we had for the employees and for all those boards that serve, I hope that this board would continue with that every five years, Bob Schaefer started that, and I thought it was a good thing, we came along, the last one we had, it is nothing that comes out of the township money, it is a donation from the three supervisors to go together, and a banquet of that nature costs about fifteen hundred dollars, split equally, five for each supervisor. I would hope that a hundred dollars a year saved out of their fees by golly that this board would not take that away. Those boards serve faithfully and spend a lot of time out of it, the authority, and they do deserve, in my mind, recognition for that. It is one of the things that Bob Schaefer and Jack Benner started that I was totally in favor of. I hope also that what you see over here, the coffee and the gratuities over here, that the supervisors continue. That money there every so often is held, well, it's a coffee fund, that comes out of the pockets of the supervisors. We donate that, most of that over there is donated for the benefit of the people, the township, because it doesn't benefit all residents. Bob Schaefer also started that, and it was a good thing to see that done, and he started by the money out of his hip pocket to help do that. I've done that faithfully, I hope the other supervisors could see that those gratuities there, don't come out of township funds, and please, don't let that force on Helen, because I know Helen, in the past, when the fund was low, has done that herself. Uh, and so that, I offer that, 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 uh, that providing it there is, is something that, that I hope that they keep going for the snacks and the coffee, there's some of it donated, uh, I, I choose to donate with them to put it on there, and I hope that continues. I offer to the new board, all the information I have, or I can give for a smooth turnover, anything that they need, any contacts, point contacts, and I have a cell phone full of, I work construction all over the place, known an awful lot of people, got an awful lot of things by golly because we knew where to go, that was beneficial to this township. I offer contacts if needed for vendors, et cetera, anything that you may ask by golly for a decent turnover out here, I offer to the incoming board, all you gotta do is ask, and I'll be glad by golly to, to give you whatever I can have or what I have available out here, to see that there's a smooth turnover out here, that there is less confusion, or that everything that you need to know, that you want to know, is available to you. I will not hold anything for that. I have requested Helen, that I have requested no plaque for years of service, or neither do I require her luncheon thanking me for the years, the thirty years that I've been here, not necessary. My satisfaction comes from the job that I did over the years that I was here. At that, I have nothing else to report, I will leave some, some other things out there, Helen, I would like to have those things because they incorporate the tools, the accountability and et cetera, included in the next month's meeting for approval, that that's accepted as what I said. And if there's anything else out there, one more time, I offer, all you people have to do is ask, I have the information, you have it. Yes, Bob?
Well, two items in what you went through, these salt sets are full and everything, there's your provisions to have them, that new material, the additional material brought in, or do would it have to be bid?
Does it happen automatically, you have to order it as you see, you have to, you have to take care of that as you see, you have to be prudent with it in order to do that, because in the wintertime, salt gets hard to get.
Yeah.
And so as you see it going down.
We have a contract for the salt.
We have a fine contract for the salt.
Okay, that'll be it.
But you can't suck it down to the last bin and, and call, because I tell you, it gets, it gets tough out there. One other thing that I will, will remind you, maybe most people don't know it, but if you see the school coming up out here and asking for anti-skid, the school out here provides two truckloads of salt to this township, we blend it and put it in, if they need a scoop on their truck, they call ahead of time, we don't quit what we're doing, they make arrangements, they get a scoop of salt from there, down there at their centers. It is highly beneficial to this township what the school board puts in out there. The truckload of anti-skid that we put in out there is mixed two to one with salt against the anti-skid, and, and put in there, which seems to work well. Uh, if you're gonna use all salt, brother, you better get a line of trucks to start delivering, because last year it was heavy, let me tell you the amount we used.
Well, that's why I'm asking is just, that you don't.
Yeah, but you have, you have to order it, you have to watch as the supply goes down.
And where do we get the anti-skid, is that coming from?
The anti-skid, the last that we got, Brian, we came from, were three dollars a ton, comes from Brunner Hour, okay?
We have to haul that.
Well, either haul that or have somebody.
And you have that contact information?
Yeah, we have all that, yeah, so where you get down there and get it.
The other item, the other item is that you mentioned that you lend tools, is that a good policy, or who do you lend them to?
What's that?
That they get lent out?
It is, it has been a policy in the past, that the chipper and stuff, but which hasn't been done lately, because I, I complained a little bit about some damage and whatnot, so they haven't borrowed it since then, but I replaced it, fixed everything. The floor saw, the borough has borrowed off of us, or the road saw, but the deal with that was, sure, yes, we gotta work together, it's beneficial, they, they, they work with us, okay. The, the thing that they done was, they got their own diamond blade, they used their own diamond blade, we kept our new one out there, and because they are extremely expensive, they're about yay big around, and, and that's, that's what they've done, they've never done no damage to it, it's a pretty hearty piece of equipment, never used it for a long time, sold across the room for the road equipment, it's been a matter of trying to work together with everybody in regards to that.
Okay, then it was the municipal, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, no, don't go to nobody else, no, don't go to nobody else, yes.
A lot of times when, when power transfers in government, you get employees that will leave, what would the road crew be staying on, uh, any indication?
I have no idea what the crow crew's gonna do, okay? Although I do know that you stopped Mr. Rissinger and asked him about it, was he gonna be the next roadmaster out here, the next roadmaster out here, and his response to you, Jim, which I explained to him tonight, was that he would quit before he took that job. So for that rumor that's out there that Tom Rissinger's quitting, I have no idea whether it's so true or not.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say anything.
Okay, so Peters asked me that here tonight.
I just thought maybe since he's been here, and knows your equipment pretty good, he might.
You know, so, so, there's an awful lot of sophisticated equipment out there, it's not like just crawling in one of them snow plows out there and twisting, twisting the key, I can tell you that right now, there's an awful lot of things out there. Everybody has a safe trip out there that they don't get hurt with it. I plowed all the roads and those, the other was one plow. So, yes, Jody?
Um, that was pretty thorough, what sounded to me like an exit interview. I'm assuming that come the end of the year, you're done, is that what I'm hearing?
Nobody's asked me to do anything, Jody, then, and...
Well, the reason I'm asking is because you know every year at budget time and every year at reorganization, I say, um, how much money are we really saving, because what are we gonna do about a township manager, and what are we gonna do about this, and your response is always, I have no intentions of going anywhere, as long as the good Lord's willing, I'm gonna by golly be doing this job as long as I can do it.
I don't think that you, no, I don't think you've ever served me saying I'm staying after this election. You tried putting that on me later on this summer, as I come up here, what am I doing? That is nothing that I have anything to do with, I haven't asked for it, and nobody's mentioned anything to me, okay? And I have no right to say that I'm not leaving.
Fair enough, but when you volunteer your time, and you have the time that you volunteer.
I'm gonna say one more time, that the road crew that's out here at the present time has been the same now as it's always been. I'm the part-timer, and you have two full timers, and we've never had nobody else more than that.
Well, what you've just described, if you're done, what you've just described is, you're gone, good luck, and, and you've given your, this is what's in this barrel, and this is what's in that barrel, and it's not really what you've insinuated over the years, that Henry Hallman dedicated to his community was actually going to fulfill in not... in not filling that position.
Well, when your term expires, Jody, just what else do you expect me to fulfill? I'm no longer an employee of the township or an elected individual.
But you've been a lifelong volunteer. It sounds as if you're basically saying you're done.
Haven't I just volunteered at the end what I had to offer, everything that you wanted? Have I not offered to do that?
Contact me if you need something. Who's gonna be plowing the roads when you go?
That's a decision to be made. I have, I cannot say who's gonna be plowing the snows. I don't have that authority, and I won't.
But a manager, had we had one in place, that wouldn't be an elected position, would be in a position to be making those decisions, right?
Well, then this new board has the opportunity to do that.
And they're at a deficit...
If that's what they so choose. I've never objected to that.
They would be at a deficit, because actually, writing a job description, listing it, filling it, you're looking at February past winter, past road seasons.
Well, I can't plan for next year.
Well, of course not. No, of course not.
And I put it in the newsletter, that if they wanted a township manager, and they have the right to do that. That was clear back in October.
Are you talking about a roadmaster or a township manager?
I'm talking about a township manager, someone that is not affected by an election, or politics, or campaigning, that is going to see through the process and make sure that the day-to-day operations is gonna be done, and not to fulfill their own satisfaction. That's what I'm looking at. Now, another point, while I still have the floor, you mentioned that you paid good money for a survey, and you were concerned about them removing pins, and that they make sure they contact you to get them back. Just for clarification purposes, the township paid for that survey, correct?
No.
No.
You paid for the survey?
I just paid the survey for my farm.
Okay, I just, I'm just curious, when we're talking about the township report, and you're giving your report based on work done for the township...
I'm just telling you, there's corner pins and monuments there that are for removed, or bound with...
For your personal property.
For mine and the neighbors' both.
Okay, that's all I'm asking, because I thought that was the township's report.
I don't want the neighbor's pin destroyed, or mine, because they're one of the same.
Perfect.
Then if they're going to dig that culvert out, they're gonna surely hit it.
Okay.
And that's all.
I just wanted that clarification, because it sounded to me as if that was the township report. I didn't realize it was mixed. Maybe I wasn't being close enough to the...
No, I just gave the report to the road, the culvert's not going to be done. And if and when they go to do it, please notify us. It'll save a lot of hassle with the neighbor, and on the survey pin, should it disappear.
Okay.
I don't want the township to dig it out, and the neighbor have a, there's no reason for him to be on the township if they don't know what's in there, and they dig it out and remove it. So I brought it to the attention, that it's there. I'd be glad to show it to everybody.
And then with regard to the fire tax, with all due respect, what you're talking about with the accountability and all those things, that again, if you go back through those minutes, and I'm sure if you look, there are plans in place that identify that accountability, and I'm glad that you acknowledged it. I'm also glad that you used fire companies, plural, but I appreciate that fact. In follow-up to your request for a meeting with the fire company and proposal, I just need to let you know, in case your solicitor has not, a meeting was offered, and a proposal presented as an option, and your solicitor declined on your behalf, indicating that that was a matter for the new board after the beginning of the year. So it's not as if the fire company, Perdix Fire Company, is not responding to your request. I just want that to be part of the record. The solicitor declined that meeting at this point.
Mr. Wagner explained that to me this evening, Jody, and I started that procedure by golly, to try to get something done, so back in July, and we didn't hear anything back from the Perdix Fire Company till Monday. There has been no response from your solicitor back to this township or ours. Mr. Wagner said, if the issue comes up, please report it. We started this in July, and we're told that we would have something back in thirty days. We are now, at this point of the time, we're just now hearing from Mr. Disser as of Monday. Mr. Disser was unaware that I was going out of office, and was unaware that Solicitor Wagner's not gonna be township manager anymore. I mean township solicitor anymore. And so it falls back into the hands of the new board.
So are we going to have privilege to the proposal from Disser and Disinger for the representative?
District of Disser didn't make any proposal. It was only for a proposal that I offered to the fire company to try to get the thing on track to get them back.
So there's a meeting, you asked for a meeting this Monday?
We were, our solicitor was following up to...
Was a proposal made, or was it just for a meeting?
Chairman Holman was... He was asking for a meeting to come back, and the proposal was gonna be presented at that time.
Okay.
So we'll be happy to meet with the new representative, whoever that may be.
But unfortunately, we won't be able to do that till after the first of the year, due to we don't...
According to your solicitor's indication, that there will be no more contact with this current board until the beginning of the year. So I don't know how you're handling that, or what you wish to do.
New knowledge to me tonight, so...
Okay. You were gonna get that.
I just, I just found that out myself.
No, it wasn't the dig. I was just saying, it was just...
You were gonna get that information, bro. You still will.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I think with some of the issues that were brought up here, you know, one, the heat of information from Chairman Holman on the health and the condition of the highway report and everything, and I guess what we would have to do at this point here, do we advertise now for a half, part-time roadmaster, part-time township manager? You're the only one that drives the big truck for plowing, correct? Pretty much?
Anybody can plop that, anybody can grow well up.
But out of the other two, you're the only one that uses the big one.
No.
No, they use it?
No.
Okay, all right, I'm just...
Tom drives them.
Okay. I'm just gathering information.
Ken drove them.
Ken?
Mullin, he drove them.
Okay, but out of the, out of the road crew we have now, you and the other two, all three of them drive, or you all three drive the big truck?
Steve, I explained, if you remember, on, I think in the budget meeting that night, I explained to you, Steve takes care of all the cul-de-sac with the new snowplow that we got on the pickup trucks, so that we don't need to spend time in there. The other three trucks, by golly, the other trucks were out keeping the main roads open, and taking the tight roads with the small trucks, like up over here on mountain top, you have to do that. And because you can't get the big trucks through, and so they kept the big trucks out, keeping the mains open. The routes were set up and established, that no matter how bad the storms were, we all finished and completed our routes, and were completed with the centers, all within ten, fifteen minutes with each other, that we all quit together. Rarely was it that there was one hunk of road that didn't get taken care of over the other one, or whatever.
And those roadmaps are, they're in the shed with what trucks get used in what area?
Pardon?
I said there is a map, or there is instruction in the shed of what trucks get used on what road, and what roads are ours.
Each crew was sent out to where they were, they were given a designated route to run out out there. There is a map hanging out there, yes, and every, and what we did was, Bob Green had a route that took about twice as long, I thought, and we changed that routing. And you people may change the routing, I'm sure, that you don't need to follow exactly what I did in the past. I'm sure there's going to be changes.
Oh, why, Ray, I meant the well, if we don't have to, if it works.
Okay, I'm glad to tell you just exactly who goes where and how it's done. That's no problem. I offer that.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm asking, if we don't have to fix it, then why redo it if it's already working?
And I can tell you who goes where first.
Okay.
And what time we call people out to do what.
Okay.
And I'm glad to do that. I'll share that with anybody. That's important, that you know that. Whatever you want out there, I'll try to give you, so you will. And as far as myself, I offer to whatever I have. So you guys, what do you want to use?
Also, then I'd bring this back to you and I, Brian. Our discussion would be then, is we don't want to get caught in January with our bridges down.
And I don't want to see that either.
Correct. So therefore, we need to, we need to start advertising for, we need to advertise for a road, a part-time roadmaster, or a full-time roadmaster. We don't know what's going on with Tom, you know? So, you know, here we come, January, we have one person to plow roads.
And I guess the only problem I have with this, and it's been open for everybody, if you're gonna put these additional employees in here, someone better show me where you're gonna get this money out of the budget.
Well, that's where we have to sit down and have an executive say.
The budget, the budget's ours!
But that, Henry, that's...
Nobody said a darn word about the budget, doing any of this, but just now!
I've been saying it for years, she's been saying it for years.
Well, you've been saying it, but...
And you, and you, and Helen make up the budget.
No, I don't. I make up for the road crew only.
And I only do the office.
And everybody else has the same opportunity to input to that as anybody else. Everybody has that opportunity.
The draft budget, the entire township is done by who?
The different departments. The police do theirs, I do the office, and Henry does the highway.
I've always said that if you're going to do what you're going to do, and you take a look at where you're at, the first minute you get into CDs, you need to step back and take a look at raising taxes. You got it, you cannot at the township get that deep.
What the people are talking about is if you make up the budget, you know darn well that if you're not here, somebody has to be hired to do the job. These two guys are sitting here now, blind, because you didn't put anything in the budget for a roadmaster, an office, you know, a township's manager. Am I correct?
Well, that, you know, I haven't heard anything...
Has that been put in the budget?
No, because everybody, nobody indicated they want it.
But you've been doing that job and volunteering your time.
And I have told you, folks, that it was gonna end this year, and I've heard nothing, Stanley.
But did you put it in the budget, knowing you're gonna leave? No!
I'll tell you what I got in the budget. I have two full-timers in there, and the part-timer, and that's exactly where we're at right now.
I've seen the budget.
The same amount of money.
And the budget for fourteenth and fifteenth, I think for thirteenth, the numbers are almost all the same going across.
The same...
Now, these two guys are sitting here, haven't said a word since the budget meeting. Last meeting, nothing was said. Yeah, right, where's the money gonna come from?
If you're going to do that... I don't know whether they're going to do that, Stanley. I don't know whether they're going to do that or not. Why does that all become my decision that I should have done this?
Because you're the ones making up the budget.
No, I only make up the road budget.
Because for five years, all we've heard, all we've heard is, we don't need to raise taxes. Look how good we're doing, by golly. We don't need to raise taxes. Now, all of a sudden, tonight, you've said the word taxes like six times in your last half-hour dissertation you've given.
And I proposed a fire tax to be based on the, my tax money there, without raising, without raising taxes. You can take a redistribution of the money that we get on real estate, and turn it into a fire tax, and put it out there in the town bill.
Exactly, but that fire tax has to be used...
Without raising taxes. I'm not gonna sit here and argue anymore about it.
That fire tax, or any of that, has to be used for fire protection purposes. It's not solving your issue with the rest of the budget. It's a smoke and mirrors game.
I didn't make all the budget. I took a look at the numbers that are there, and I feel that they're sound based on the same amount of employees and what we got now.
Right, based on everything that you've said, and all of the last newsletters, that nowhere under your administration is there gonna be a raise in taxes.
And if you want to change it, you have the right to change it.
Well, guess what? You guys are gonna have to raise taxes to make up for it.
Did I not put that in the newsletter, that they have the right to do that? That was, I'll tell everybody out here, here's your opportunity, if you want that, come forward. Nobody has come forward. Nobody has come forward.
Would it have mattered if they did?
Jody, if the people would have come out here, and Mr. Peters and Mr. McGuire and them wanted an increase in this, and wanted to consider that and put it in place, I was not objectionable to that, but I haven't heard nothing. Now we're full bore into a budget to be approved here next month, based on the finances that you have and the revenues coming in at the present time. I don't see no big issue with any of it, because the reserves are there to cover this, should you start exceeding it. If you hire somebody else at the beginning of next year, if you put somebody on, and I've always said, and I'll say it one more time, when you see that number going backwards, you've got enough to get you through the year you need to take a look at. I have no idea what the expenditures is, or what the wishes are of the next board. I have no idea. Nobody's expressed that to me.
Well, my only recommendation for the seated and incoming board is, remember the quote, "We inherited this problem."
Can I have a question?
Yes, Lee.
I take it Rich Wagner is down at the end of the year?
That's correct.
Are his bills up to date?
Yes.
The lawsuits, the whole nine yards with the fire...
What lawsuits?
Well, fire company.
Well, that lawsuit there, there's never been nobody spent by this board here, but to mount to anything, Lee, and nothing's happened for how many years? The last time that I heard anything, the last time that I was in a courthouse, was what, a year and a half up here, when the Perdix Fire Company said they wanted to continue on with it, and they would keep it moving. Haven't heard a thing about it since.
Okay, so Rich has nothing?
So there's been no money spent on that.
We have no bills out there from Rich that are gonna hit us?
No, sir, not at all. Not at all. And the meeting that I had down there, I paid for that out of my pocket. That did not come out of that request, by golly, to try to find some common ground, to put Perdix back in service. That money come out of my pocket.
Can I clarify one thing?
Yes.
The bill is at the end of the month, so January, we may have a bill for December services. So it'll be paid in the...
For December services?
Yes.
It's not, it's not for the ongoing...
No.
I know of no lawsuits or nothing else out there. There hasn't been any for years. The lawsuits and stuff all went haywire. The last one that I was involved with was with Roar Drive, when they were involved with that. And I wasn't a board member at that time. I testified against the township in that case. Just to keep it straight, because I didn't...
Well, Henry, you know as well as I do how much money we pissed away in municipal authority.
Do I ever. And that's all that's stopped.
So I'm right there. If we're getting a big bill somewhere...
No, you're not.
Okay.
It's not there. Where would it come from?
What about the litigation with Ward?
Litigation with Ward? Well, the last I heard from Rich, that is the new Bloomfield problem, Cece.
You're saying Rich doesn't have anything hanging out there?
Until they move on that. I mean, he done all the paperwork, everything that he's done on that, that he submitted, and filed the injunction and stuff, that was all done. That portion was already billed, all taken care of, Helen.
Yes.
Is that something easily he can brief the new solicitor with? And is that...
Well, I'm sure he would. They work together.
Okay. Or would he continue working on that?
No. No, not as a role, Brian.
That's what's...
I think that matter up there, Cece, I think that's still, still like some of the things that...
DeBerk? Yes.
I haven't heard, I know that.
And I question that, you know? He did his part on that, found the paperwork as requested, and that was sent up there.
And he's not going to represent the township any longer with the Perdix?
I can't answer for that, how that is. I would doubt it. I mean, if he's not gonna be here unless you would request him.
Well, I mean, we're looking at five or six years of litigation, that he's gonna have to try to bring a new solicitor onboard to properly represent the township. It's kinda like changing presidents in the middle of a war.
Well, that's a question you need to ask him. I'm glad to ask him that, or whatever the story is, and...
If we can ask him if he's gonna continue to represent the township at the same rate that whoever we're paying him now, to continue representing the township. Because if not, then I'm sure there's things we're gonna have to apply to the courts for new representation of the township, that we have to bring acknowledge to the court system that there's a new solicitor, and therefore, we may need more continuances to bring that solicitor onboard. But we have a solicitor currently that is knowledgeable of all those things.
You have, you have the right to ask him that. And I would gladly do that, to try to get you an answer, if you want.
Okay, I would appreciate that, so sure.
Are DeBerk and Morrison satisfied?
I haven't heard anything.
What's that?
I haven't heard anything.
DeBerk and Morrison?
Morrison?
Morrison and DeBerk were the two that had the clerical issues that then appealed and...
I haven't heard anything in over a year.
Yeah, Morrison, Jody, on the last thing with Morrison up there, was what he tried to, that was up there when the building, putting the heat in and doing the work up there, and it was...
That was a conditional use, was it?
That was a conditional use, but that part of it up there, I don't know of any lawsuit, I don't know of any litigation that's going on in regards to that, or on the other one down there.
I thought there were appeals on both of them, that Rich was waiting a decision and waiting for a time back.
Helen, if you could put a report together of all outstanding things, anything legal that's challenging the township.
Yes.
Am I not correct, Helen, the appeals on those particular two, by golly, they won... Am I not correct, Helen, the appeals on those particular two, by golly, they won those appeals because the township, by golly, that was a mistake for you. We did not respond in time. They won them on the basis, by golly, of a default of the township. I'm not.
I believe so.
That's correct. So those are gone.
And the Barrick lawsuit, that is being held by our insurance company, correct?
Yes.
Which one hit up, Brian?
Barrick. Oh, I don't know his, what, what's his first name?
Is that the one with the police department?
Yes.
Josh Barrick.
And, um, is that in the court system, or is that?
That's still in the court system.
Grand jury?
I'm not sure exactly.
Okay, if you could get with the insurance or attorneys and find out where that is at, so that way we're, if we can be brought up to pace on that also.
DeBerk, um, Ward. I think that's the one that wants out, okay.
Dennis is handling, and.
Atkins, yes. Mr. Atkins removed the stuff, but Dennis was talking with Mr. Atkins' solicitor and seeing if he's gonna do a land development plan or not.
Mr. Atkins' solicitor, you mean Rich?
No, someone else. She, she likes the solicitor hot.
With no other business here in front of us, one more time, I will offer to Brian Peters, Brian McGuire, and the future supervisor, Mr. Landis. If there's anything you would like to know about, anything you'd like to discuss while I'm supervisor hereafter, I make myself available to help you in any way I can.
Appreciate it, Ed, sir. Thank you.
Nothing, nothing do I wish to hold, hold back in any way, shape, or form.
Now, Helen, you just mentioned that Mr. Chatto was representing township.
On Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Atkins. But Mr. Atkins has another attorney?
He does not have Rich.
He does not have Rich?
No. Um, I can't remember the name of the attorney Dennis mentioned, but it wasn't Rich.
Okay, but I thought the reason we went with Dennis was because it was a conflict.
That's what Rich said. That's what Wagner said. He said it was a conflict because he has represented him in the past. I also, when I was checking all those other solicitors, I had, came up with two others had also represented a Mr. Atkins in the past, so.
I see Mr. Atkins has removed the stuff.
Yes, he has. Uh, the question that Dennis and Mr. Atkins' solicitor are discussing is whether he's gonna submit a land development plan to change.
If he wants to.
Yes, yes.
When they did the research, did they notice that Mr. Wagner represented me several times in the past?
I didn't ask him about.
Just curious.
I mean, no, I.
Just throwing that out there.
You mean with Perdix?
He's my personal attorney.
Oh, I.
That's why I found it interesting.
But we're asking for, um, it might be because it's the Perdix Fire Company versus you personally?
Oh, no, I'm named personally.
I don't know that. I didn't.
As are the supervisors.
I wasn't in on that one.
Just, I'm, I'm just putting it out there when we're talking about conflict.
Okay, this time being a further business, I'd like a motion that we do enter a brief executive session. Personnel, Helen, would you mind standing for me a little bit?
No, but new business.
And we'll make it quick. It is now 25 of, of nine. Hey, Helen, it is now 9:30. Reopen this meeting. The executive held, session was held for a personnel issue. Informative information to be transferred to the supervisors. New decisions made. It was an information-only personnel issue. That, I make a motion, we resign.
Adjourned.
Adjourned, yeah. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second on those favor, give the consent of saying aye. Aye to have it, meeting adjourned.